Yes. Yeah.
I just got a text saying it wasn't working.
Okay. All the meeting order, we'll call, please.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Renier.
Here.
Mrs. Song.
Here.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Mr. John.
Here.
Let's lead this to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and essence.
First item of this is to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion? Seven. Move second. Second.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mrs. John. Mr. Renier.
Yes.
Mrs. Song. Yes. Mr. Sharp.
Yes. So consent agenda. Item one, accept mention from previous meeting. Two, approve certificate and substitute list number three is submitted by the perfect time in ASC for 2021, which is attached to. Item three, approve resignation and retirements, resignation of Kelsey Waite for number position as third grade team leader effective immediately. Item four, accept donation, which was an anonymous donation in the amount of $10 to the athletic department. Out of Silken Mountain. So is there a motion for that? Problem moves. Seconds. A second. Seconds. Discussion. We'll call.
Mrs. Song. Yes. Mr. Renier.
Yes.
Mr. John.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes. Public participation. We've got several. Start with Morgan Anderson at the FFA.
Hi, everyone. So schoolward members, for those of you that don't know me, I am Morgan Anderson, and I'm currently the president of the Amanda Creek FFA chapter. And just a little bit of background information about me, I'm currently a senior. And I was elected into the position of president this past February at our chapter 2020, 2021 officer elections. And from here on, I'll be providing you guys a recap of our chapter activities and successes at each meeting. So to begin with that, some of these highlights from the past eight months include our state public speaking contest, we have three compete this year. We had one second place finish and one fourth place finish both were commendable. State ag sales, we placed 11th in the state. We have district seven officer training where 15 of our officer team learned how to lead others as well as promote growth in their chapter. Then after that, we'll say we had a quick pause in our activities and we'll skip on over to May where we had our virtual state convention all online and all over Zoom, definitely a once in a lifetime experience where we had six different members earn their state FFA degree. We had Sierra Andrews, a 2020 grad, received a state finalist award for her accounting project. All three of our treasurer books received perfect ratings, and if you didn't know, our chapter is known for having this streak. So it's definitely a great job on our part. As far as the state FFA officer team, which represents Ohio FFA, Kyle Hicks was elected as the state vice president as large. I'm sure you guys remember Kyle, of course. He was elected on this team out of 26,000 FFA members. And Noah Smith, a 2019 grad and past president, retired his year as the state secretary. So those are now very well-known faces in Ohio FFA. This past September, we participated in the virtual Ohio Legislative Leadership Conference where we learned about agricultural policy and how to advocate effectively as not only people in our FFA chapter, but as young adults going on into the real world. So it was a very beneficial experience. Just some quick other things, we held our September and October breakfast, September and October FFA meetings. And this week, we'll be participating in our virtual national FFA convention where we'll be honoring numerous awards because at the national level, like I said, we do get honored frequently every year at that level. Our poultry evaluation team consisting of Dorothea, Sierra, Stephanie, and Cameron will be qualified for nationals as well as myself for employment skills. Amidst all these events, our chapter would like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to do all these things. I know that this small taste of normal helps keep our members across the high school feel motivated and want to come to school during these times, and that is something that we cannot thank you enough more for. And of course, we have been strict with our chapter and following the needed protocols to be safe and compliant with the times at hand. So again, thank you very much.
You realize that Morgan became pumpkin show queen and he never had a pumpkin show yet. And then she became president of the FFA. Never FFA. I don't know, Morgan, I'm kind of concerned here. It's a trip here.
All right, student liaison reports. We got Anthony and Anthony Buckley, I'll say the full names. Who wants to go first?
Okay, so hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Stephanie Bowers. I'm a senior here at Amanda Creek. This year, I'll be serving as the student liaison next to Mr. Buckley here. Since the last board meeting, class officer elections were held and new officers were stated for each grade level. The first nine weeks ended on October 9th, and grade cards were sent home this past Thursday. Next, all cold sports have been completed except for football, which competes this Friday at Hamilton Township. So thank you to all of you for doing everything possible to allow the student athletes to have their fall season. As a senior, it meant a lot to me to get my last season Aces volleyball, so I thank you very much for all your support.
The senior class will be meeting with Herb Jones for graduation items on Friday and October 30th. Sophomores will meet with Herb Jones for class rings on Friday, October 30th as well. The career center will present to sophomores also Friday, October 30th in the cafeteria from 9:00 to 9:45 a.m. Finally, Aces Against Cancer Chapulte Night is November 4th at Chapulte on Memorial Drive in Lancaster from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you.
I didn't talk to him, just for him or not, you have no obligation to stay. So if you would.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll make sure you thank you for all your reports.
Thank you all. Our next item for during the public participation is Steve Hammond and Paul doing a presentation on the bandroom extension.
All right, I'll use Tom Fernandez. Tom was our lead architect on this building when it was Steve Hammond. It's now SHP leading design. You can tell the secretary who was here when this building was built, it's still great for the agendas. So Mr. Fernandez, if you would like to begin your presentation, what I ask Mr. Fernandez to do is to give us like an overview of where we are, where we want to get to, and how we would proceed to get to that point. So with that.
Great. Well, and like, I was the youngest of big panelists, so you can call me anything, I answer. It's no big deal. Are you going to put the screen there?
Yes.
I guess I have to go here and scroll down. As JB said, just like to give an overview of where we are, how we're at there, and then where we might want to go. Early on, and I guess it was before the Von Levy, or Von Levy past, right, JB?
Yeah.
JB asked, there was obviously a desire to expand the music suite. So we looked at different options, and the first option we looked at was a very modest.
Mr. Vic, can we turn this light off?
Yep.
Just trying to go on the screen. It makes me. Uh huh. There we go. Thank you.
So just to orient you, this is the front of the building. Bandrooms currently back here. So that's what we were looking at as far as the footprint is concerned. And we looked at a couple of options, as you'll see. One was see what we could do if we contained everything within the building. And then once we talked to and reviewed the program with the band director, you know, there was a desire to make the program a little bigger and a little more functional. So we're going to follow, look at that as well. So our first option was to look at existing space, the bandroom. So that orange block is actually within the building. That is really the existing bandroom. And what we could do to that to modify it is we wanted to expand the program to accommodate 100 students in the band. Then that required more space. So we started looking at what the existing layout was. And what you see here is as it currently is laid out, instrumental music, vocal, stage is here. So, you know, the cafeteria and the seating area is here. And all these green lines mean that those are structural bearing walls. So we tried in our solutions to maintain those because to take those out are relatively expensive and wanted to be as efficient as we could. So you enter into the bandroom suite this way. These are the practice rooms, library, office, and then the two instrumental music as well as the vocal. So to increase that footprint, to accommodate the number of students that you wanted in the instrumental, in the band essentially. The only way to accomplish that is really to look at taking out, as you remember, these were the green lines, I didn't touch those. Here is where the practice rooms and the offices were. So we had to take those out to give us enough room to provide enough seating for the band. Which had, we also had to allocate, you know, offices and practice rooms and, you know, the other ancillary spaces. At this, we presented and reviewed it. Ms. Bradford, right?
Ms. Meyer.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
And?
Yeah, Jill was our thing, too.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And so we reviewed this, and we quickly realized that there might be some more, there were more program spaces that needed to be accommodated in here. And we started thinking, well, why have I been building all these spaces? We weren't getting any kind of efficiencies, and we weren't really getting the types of spaces that we really needed, and you'll see in the next one. Because when you start looking at, you know, you really do need a choir room. You really do need a lot more storage room. It's hard to have a program operate when you're working both instrumental and the choral program out of the same space. So that, when we talked about that, we said, well, maybe the least expensive thing to do, well. So we actually did do an estimate for this. And again, a large multipurpose instrumental room, choral music space that combined, three new practice rooms, two new offices. So that was construction cost of about $470,000. Slot costs, fees, permits, insurance, all those types of things. Another 20% roughly. And that brought it up to $565,000. So then we started looking at other options that may make it more functional for you. And we said, well, rather than building space out here, carving that up, or actually do the renovation that we suggested here and put in addition on to accommodate more storage spaces and things like that. So maybe the more economical way to do it, and probably a better functioning way to do it, is to actually build just a new bandroom. You know, so this would be a relatively inexpensive, or less expensive structure to build because it's a pretty open space. And then we could still use the existing spaces and not need to modify them as much as we did in the other. So when we look at that one again, the existing plan was the bearing walls. But we looked at putting up, you'll see in the program, we need about 3,500, 3,500 square feet for the bandroom proper, and then there's some ancillary spaces that needs to go there. We use this for the instrumental bandroom. And where the choral music enters storage for the band as well as choir, choral music could then go into the bandroom. These rooms could really remain their same uses. The one thing that we were planning on doing was putting windows, cutting windows into all the practice rooms so that there's, you know, visual connection from the adjacent spaces. And really keep a lot of these, these spaces, this changes from instrumental to maybe uniform storage and all the different storage components you have there. So that was the general strategy that seemed to make a lot of sense. And like I said, this is just a fifty years thing. I mean, it's pretty, obviously, it's fellowship. But I mean, you can see it says it's just a very simple structure, you know, very economical. I really like the fact that you're facing more so you could have some nice light coming in, you know, whether you want to have the light going out to the playground or not. But anyway, it could be a really nice vibrant space as well. So we did a little quick estimate for this. You can see we had a new bandroom accommodate 100 students. And these are just kind of like the industry standards, 35 square foot per student. And that gave us 3,500 square feet. And then for circulation and other services that you may need, typically just put in a 20% factor that. Existing the bandroom would become choir, existing choir would become instrumental storage, existing practice rooms, right, add window PH. Existing instrumental storage to become choir storage. And then our conceptual cost, and again, these were just really square foot numbers. And we thought that construction cost would be around $1,160,000. Again, slot cost of $290,000, with a total project cost of $14,500. So that's where we were, that's where we are, I guess. Definitely. And now we're, you know, looking at next steps. You know, in general, I think we're in the ballpark of as far as cost is concerned, that we're looking at something like option two. These numbers need to be confirmed, the programming needs to be confirmed. Again, we were just trying to give you a context to make a decision in, if you will, if you wanted to further investigate this. But we would really need to have more meetings with the users, with the instrumental and choral people, and everybody that's involved with really developing this and fleshing out the details of how we could use or what they would need to have in those spaces. And then we could really come up with a very accurate number for you. So first of all, do you have any questions about what we presented today?
Hi. You can include this in the presentation, I apologize, but these numbers are based on accommodating how many students would this plan accommodate?
100 band students.
And currently, our room is built, accommodating 40, like currently?
Forty.
Forty. That's our.
Maximum.
That's our maximum capacity as it stands now.
And what's our current band enrollment?
We had 67 in marching band this year, and that's down a little bit due to students going online and several. We would, should have been around 71. We've been.
What was your last year?
79.
Okay.
Yeah, we had two years where we were in the high seventies.
Mr. Fernandez, I have two questions. Can we get this sent to us, this presentation?
You got it.
Okay. And two, we have never hired you yet. So how do we go about hiring you? If we want, if we have to choose somewhere to fit.
Well, there's a couple ways to go about it. I think what I would recommend is that we take it to the, we have a contract and for a modest amount of money. We continue to work with your music department and whoever you deem we need to work with to really flesh out what this means. You know, look at this in more detail, honestly understand, you know, right now, we're going into the parking lot. It's the bus parking that we're kind of, we're going to need to change a little bit. There's there's really, there's only this one drain line there. So from the site perspective, it's pretty clean. You know, I was looking at it before I got here. I went, actually, after I got here. Before the meeting. You know, there's this walkway here. And you know, you start thinking, well, can we just scooch this over a little bit and use this as a connector? You know, so it's all those kinds of things that we'd want to start looking at to make sure that, you know, we were doing it in the most efficient way that we could. So we would, we would refine the program. We would refine, refine the design from a conceptual level. And then that way, we could give you a much more accurate pricing idea of what it was going to cost. And then we could also start talking about, you know, there's always confusion about what's in the budget and what's not in the budget. You know, for example, you know, some of the, what we call an FFA furniture, fixtures, furniture, and equipment. And make sure that we have all that so that you can see that you've got everything included in your budget so that when you move in, it's exactly what you, what you want. This will be a little nuanced, too, because you have a lot of existing equipment that we'll be using. So there might not be a big need about that, but it would be nice to know before you approve that. So we would do that. And then once we get to that point, you will have a very good idea of what the project scope is, a very good idea of what the project cost is. And then at that time, you can put it out for advertising to hire an architectural firm to take it from that point to do the construction drawings and take it to bidding and to help you through the construction process. So obviously, we'd be interested in submitting for that, but legally, we need, you need to do that because anything over $50,000 would require advertising. So I think that that would be probably quickest way to get to where you want to be. There is, we have been seeing very competitive pricing. Really, I mean, most of our projects post-COVID are now coming in probably 10 to 15% less than once. We're estimating it's a very competitive marketplace. So it's a good time to proceed with the project as well. So I guess what I would recommend is that you consider retaining us. Again, for those upfront services. And then moving forward.
Is the 1 million, 1.1 million, I know that's just a very rough estimate, but do you come up with that based on like a price per square foot?
Yes. The price per square footage. And the thing was, it's not just this square footage, you know, we had to go in and we used some numbers for what we were going to have to do to those spaces.
That makes sense. You know, just doing the quick math on the 4,500, I was at $257 per square foot, so, but that makes more sense if you're.
Yeah, I did the same thing. $250 is pretty low.
Yeah. That's why I was kind of like, wait a minute. This is a pretty simple space, but that makes sense. JB, we don't have to make a decision on this right now.
There's nothing to decide on tonight. We, I think Mr. Fernandez will give us a cost of what that, he spoke to, modest cost. I will have him give us the estimate, and then we can, that cost to give him, have him do the services of coming in, me with this Meyer, myself, and whomever else needs, is required, to discuss so he can get to an exact number.
He can work with you, but I think it's going to be somewhere around $7,000, $10,000. Very possible, like fine art frames available.
Are you familiar with that? Any fine art, fine arts frames?
That might be available, that we could apply for.
I'm not familiar with that.
But it was Capitol Conference in four years ago. One of the, one school that built this big fancy thing. It was all for band and choir, big, big art, art stuff. There was another thing, I've been, last year, I feel like looking at it, I actually got myself somewhere where they had, I think it was, that's, I don't remember what, but that Columbus that had grants for different music band related projects. Now, I don't know if they do for that big of a project. I don't know, I don't remember. I have to go back and look.
Well, the Capitol Conference is starting here soon, we might as well find something else again, so.
Right. Yeah, and if you can check your notes and just, if you find the name, you know, give it to JB and record that on.
You guys are all signed up for Capitol Conference.
Okay. That's what I asked you about that. You just did the group one?
I did the group one. I did also board the principals and supervisors.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fernandez or Ms. Meyer? I mean, she's been a part of the, I think, pretty much, we try to keep her involved in this stuff.
Right.
Surprise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mom.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. JB, do I have to say for the rest?
No.
Well, you don't want to. You can give that to JB.
Okay, we'll give it, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that includes public participation, so now we're on to treasure report recommendations.
It's all going to do the monthly financials first before public notice. So this is the financial report for September of 2020. In it, you'll find your financial summary, the board five-year report, your fund sum, bin sum, checks, and then the bank reconciliations at the end. So for September and revenues, September general fund revenues were $1,016,693. Our revenue sources included our state foundation settlement, investment earnings, and student fees and tuition, tuition. On the board five-year report, you're going to notice that we didn't receive our rollback in homestead like we have in the previous years because we received it in August, and that's why you're going to see that it's, the amounts are down. In expenditures, September general fund expenditures were $1,775,814. Total checks written for September, this is for all funds, $2,207,802. Our purchase services is higher again this year due to paying the quarterly ESC billing this month. This is the first one that always comes in. And the other expenditure line item is the lowest this month than it has been in the past five years. You'll also notice on the board five-year report for expenditures that our capital outlay is significantly higher. that our capital outlay is significantly higher. We paid for the three buses that month in September, so forty-nine thousand of it was through a grant, the rest came all through our general fund, so about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand was about that amount. Overall, our September expenditures were higher than revenues by seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars due to the way the revenues are received. Our cash balance is maintained from last year at this time and is two point five million lower than September of eighteen, four point seven million lower than September of seventeen. Current general fund balance, ten million, five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. And encumbrances are one point five million, which brings our fund balance to nine million, thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Anyone have any questions?
The other local revenues for receipts?
Yes. So you'll see in twenty twenty and September of nineteen, we were significantly higher than in eighteen, seventeen, and sixteen of the same months. That's where we received, we're starting to receive our asset fourteen and fourteen H tuition. That's special ed tuition that comes in from the state to help us educate some of those students. So when that tuition comes in, you're going to see those significantly higher. Ours is about ninety-two, ninety-three thousand dollars. So that's where you're going to see that jump there.
So in those prior years, we were getting them in a different month?
Sometimes we got them in August, and sometimes it's just the way that they came through in Fall Nation. Anything else? I just want to kind of explain also, when you're trying to tie any numbers together, some of the things that you want to look like, look at in the report. If you go to your five-year board report, you're going to see in your expenditures to date, this is just general fund numbers. So when you go to your fund sum and you go to your expended in your general fund in your expended column, you're going to see that it's four point five million. When you go to your trend and your expenditures to date will match the same amount there. So that's one thing that you want to look at, and your cash balance is always going to match too. So when you look at your bank reconciliation, the total bank balance of twelve point four million, you will see that on your fin sum. And it's the very back page, on page ten, under your current fund balance. You'll see that it matches the twelve point four million there. So that kind of helps you kind of tie some of those numbers together. Just getting all those reports on the timeline, I wonder how long you're, the board, still a lot of numbers. Anyone have any other questions? I'll go ahead and do the public notice. This is something we do for compliance for all of our federal funds once a year. So Amanda Clare Preschool District received funds through the High Department of Education via our Consolidated Continuous Improvement, which is CCIP. A lot of you guys won't hear that all the time. Monies are, we receive monies through IDEA Part B, and that's used for special ed services. We also have IDEA funds for special ed services for preschool students also. Our Title I funds are used to provide math reading for early literacy interventions for identified students. And our Title II funds can be used for either professional development or to reduce class sizes. This year, we're reducing class sizes in the second grade. We are in the fourth year of a grant called Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. This follows the new ESEA laws and guidelines. And this year is our first year for another grant through Title I. It's, it's an expanding grant. So our total federal grant funds for this year is five hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and one dollars. That is an increase of about eleven thousand dollars over last year. So in Title I, we received two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. This is a, about a six thousand, almost seven thousand dollar increase from last year. We do have a potential carryover from last year when we reported everything, so about twenty-six thousand dollars. We are school-wide in primary, elementary, and middle school. This is the seventh year that we've been school-wide. And these funds are being used for salary benefits of two teachers, part-time middle school tutor, and Title I coordinator, and we do have family and community events and supplies that we use money for that also. The expanding opportunities for each child grant is four thousand, one hundred and sixty-one. That's the new grant that I was telling you we received this year. And it's, that money is being allocated to give some extra hours to a part-time middle school tutor. We do a lot of title funds going towards our primary and our elementary because we want to build up from the ground up. And our middle school is incorporated in the Title I, so we need to start flowing some funds that way to them. Our IDEA Part B is our five sixteen fund, that's special ed, three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our allocation has increased about ninety-eight hundred dollars from last year. We always use that money for our Fairfield County ESC units. And we spend it all every year, so there's no potential carryover for that. And that's the same with our IDEA. Seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-two is our allocation this year. We spend it all on preschool for Fairfield County ESC, so no potential carryover. It is about fifty-three dollars more from last year. And then Title II-A. This is the one that you can use for either professional development or reducing class sizes. We are reducing class sizes in the second grade. The allocation did increase thirty-eight hundred dollars from last year. We do have a potential carryover of thirty-nine thousand dollars and is being used for salary and benefits for that second grade teacher. The last federal grant that we have is Title II, Title II-A, or A, sorry. Student Support and Academic Enrichment. That's the one that, this is our fourth year in that grant. We received fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. It has increased over last year by six hundred and six dollars. We do have a potential carryover coming back to us for ten thousand dollars. When I tell you we have a potential carryover, that's because we didn't spend that all last year. And so that's the first fund that we have to spend this year, so we can get rid of that first. We do have an allocation, has to be certain categories. We have picked the well-rounded educational opportunities, safe and healthy students, and effective use of technologies. Currently, those allocations are going towards instructional programming, instructional supplies, professional development, and stipends. Those are the ones that we normally get for our educational programming. But I also wanted to let you guys know about the CARES Act funding that came through. Our CARES Act, we received a total of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. The first round, we called it the first round, was the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. That's our five oh seventh fund. That was a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five were received. It provides emergency relief grants to schools related to COVID-nineteen. These allocation is restricted, so there are certain things that we can, can spend it on. It's being used for instructional technology for remote learning, custodial cleaning supplies, thermometers, foggers, motion-activated hand sanitizers, soap dispensers, the bottle fillers out here, and the drinking fountains that came from there, and additional technology department staffing hours to get all of that stuff together. We do have to provide money for non-public schools that receive title funding from us. We do have one non-public school, so we've got to flow money towards them also. And all of this has to be spent before December thirty-first. The Coronavirus Relief Fund is our five-ten fund. That's kind of like our second round, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. It kind of follows what the first round was, but the allocation's still restricted. It's a little more restricted this time. We also do not have to send money to non-pubs. The state has already done that prior to. But we're not allowed to supplant. We have to supplement, which means that we can't buy toilet paper, because we've always bought toilet paper. But we have to be able to buy additional items that's COVID-related that we wouldn't normally get. We're using this for daytime custodians and additional hours for cleaning and deep cleaning and custodial supplies. And again, this one has to be spent prior to December thirty-first also. So we did, I wanted to kind of point out, a lot of people have always said, well, you know, you got your budget cuts, but you then got your coronavirus funds to help everything out. They're two totally different funds because we got, our budget cut was two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And that's for educational programming and things. These are more restricted, so you can only do it towards COVID-related items. Not saying that that's bad. I'm, I'm thoroughly blessed that we, we were helped out with that, with everything that had went on. But it's not a one-for-one change, so.
Obviously, we had not planned on buying motion detector hands sanitizers, soap dispensers, and additional custodians prior to March first, so it was not, you can spend it if you want to, but it's money we've not spent.
How much do we get, JB, for the CARES Act?
The total CARES Act was two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one oh eight ninety-four.
And how much do we have left?
We've got seven purchase orders out. I don't know exactly.
That's okay.
We're going to go ahead and reconcile out because we're going to go through and do any kind of adjustments. If we're seeing that we need something different than we had originally planned, I want to reconcile that out, get something new in there, and get it all spent before the end of.
So we're not leaving money on the table?
Exactly.
We're not handing money, yes.
Yes, there will not be.
I went through this same exact thing at the end of September, so, with my job, so I can understand that.
Yeah.
That is where you're going through.
It's crazy.
Yeah. You don't want to leave money on the table.
No, not at all.
The government's money on the table.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions on all of our federal funds? That was a quick rundown.
I'm just going to go and get a question or something else.
Okay.
On the registry. Kind of what the expenditure is for Ohio CAT. It's on the first page of the registry.
Sure, that's the buses.
That's the buses.
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean when you say that's the buses?
That's the purchase for our buses, yes. We brought them through Ohio CAT. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
That two seventy-seven, kind of, you did it. I was curious.
And that was for the full three buses with the grant.
We have more included than that.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Anne, I want to take a quick question. The bank reconciliation, I noticed that we've got quite a few CD investments that are coming. They're going to be maturing in the spring, one in January, two in May. Do, what happens to those when they, when they mature?
So those, all three of those are through Kingston National Bank. So the bank will call and make sure that you're aware that they are maturing. And a lot of times, we will go ahead and take the interest off of it. You know how we were earmarking the interest for the track? So a lot of times, we'll earmark that interest somewhere and just roll the original over. We'll call around to get some different rates at different places too, but Kingston's always been able to give us a good rate. And they're local. So that's what will happen, is they'll come up and you'll be able to decide how you want to do that if you just want to reinvest it. A lot of times, when you, when you're not going to be spending your entire budget, or there aren't specific projects that you want to, to put that towards, you'll just reinvestment. And it might be for, you might get a good rate for eighteen months, you know, and then the project's not going to be coming up for two years, so you're going to go there that way. So it just kind of, you just kind of look at what your projects are coming up and what interest rates you can get.
Do we have like an estimate or any kind of idea of how much interest these are going to have, these will have accrued by the time this year?
These three are the higher interest rates because I got them in, and I think it was a two or a three-year rate, so it was a much higher rate. But I can always get that information for you.
I was just curious, like, if it's going to be ten thousand or if it's going to be a hundred thousand or something.
It won't be a hundred thousand. That would be nice.
Sure, yeah.
Long on or those things.
Yeah, right, right.
But yeah, so once we get that interest, then we can go ahead. Instead of just putting it straight into the general fund, we can earmark it for something.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Do you have a question? Do you need a motion to accept the financial reports?
I do.
Move, second.
Play.
Second, you get a discussion.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm? Yes. Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent reports and recommendations.
All right, you will notice we do have an addendum here, number one. I'd recommend we approve classified substitutes for two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. Cook cashier is Daniel Lathan and he is substitute president, Jason Lundy, registered to September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Your motion.
Well, then one A is, is a separate F.
I got separate, sorry.
F minus.
Excellent, move, there's a second.
Yes.
Second, discussion. Your motion.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the following certificate contract for twenty twenty-one school year, is second grade teacher Sarah Bauer.
Move, there's a second. Second, discussion.
If you remember, this is, just mentioned the classroom reduction. That is, that's the first, that makes us six now in second grade because of our class numbers. I hate to start this late, but get more than one each or something.
Let's, let's come to our ratios and.
Ratio, Mrs. Marshall?
Yep, adding the six teacher will put twenty kids in every class. Yep.
Some of these are online and coming here in the classroom.
So we only have seven second graders that are still online.
How many did you have?
Oh, yeah, we had forty-seven kids come back in second grade, so. No, all together, no. Sorry. Yes, we are so good, no.
In your K through two?
Yeah, yeah.
So do most grades only have just a few months of time here?
I don't have, well, kindergarten, that's less.
How many do they have left?
Seventeen.
But you have six teachers, right? So it's not for you to teach.
No, we have five.
Five teachers, oh, okay.
Yeah, but we, with this classroom, we sent letters home on October ninth asking for volunteers. I have twenty-five volunteers, so now I will narrow it down, kind of trying to get some certain classes, all of, all kinds of factors, but we had plenty of volunteers to fill in twenty that we were hoping to get. So some of them will have to turn down.
It's still plenty of volunteers versus just moving them.
Yes, absolutely. We thought we'd start with that first before kind of, you know, telling parents that their kid had to move, especially because some kids can't handle that.
True.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Any other discussion on that? All right, your motion.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the following volunteers for the twenty twenty-one school year, is wrestling Ashley Spires.
Second. Second, discussion.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the following twenty twenty-one sophomore contracts, high school reserve basketball, Daniel Fox, high school reserves roles, Chastity Strickler, inner game manager, Jonathan Grob, and team leader for third grade, Elizabeth Stolzer. And then, I'd like, the board has offered the position of varsity assistant boys' basketball, middle school girls' basketball coach, seventh, eighth grade, high school varsity wrestling coach, middle school wrestling coach, middle school boys' basketball coach, those seventh, eighth grade. To those employees, the district has a license and no such employee qualified for these positions, except for them. Further, the positions were advertised as available to any individual with a license that was qualified to fill them and not, is not employed by the board. With that, I would like to recommend high school assistant varsity boys' basketball coach, Alex James, high school varsity wrestling coach, Robert Gwatham, middle school girls' seventh grade basketball, Vanessa Butterball, middle school girls' eighth grade basketball coach, Ed Sar, middle school boys' basketball, Colin Henley, and middle school boys' basketball, seventh grade, Justin Cassley.
Okay. Your motion.
My.
Second, three seconds, discussion.
Well, I can just go back to the volunteers, and some of those in general, I appreciate people stepping up, leaning rolling. Well, I just go back to the volunteers and some of those in general, I appreciate people stepping up, willing to do what they're doing because these are not easy positions to find, and they, we saw in our addendum, we now need to find a wrestling coach, so. I think except for that position, all positions are now filled.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve early graduation for a student who has met the requirements provided by the gifted coordinator from the ESC.
Your motion. I'll do this. Second, discussion.
We do not have a lot of students who petition for early graduation, but this student has met all the requirements and has felt that he recommends that we encourage students to graduate early.
Is this a junior, Mr. Kern?
Yes. So, huh?
Senior for December graduation.
Okay.
Oh, so this graduate, a couple ones are met. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just purely out of curiosity, is this like somebody that if they were a valedictorian or whatever, they would still qualify? She's done, so which means her transfer is finalized, she does not receive her diploma until graduation day. You know, that's a great question as far as, that goes as far as a valedictorian, because she's still participating in the ceremony, so her ranking would be the same in the end. That's a great question, Mr. Sharp, I'll have to look into that one.
I figure if she's gifted, she's probably got pretty good GPA.
That's a very, very good question.
So this person's going to not attend second semester, but she'll walk with her class?
She has the option to, I don't know if she's decided that or not, but she has the option to. Yeah, she's not, she's confirmed as a graduate as of December 18th, but she does not receive her diploma until the paper.
Everybody else, gotcha.
Until graduation.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the memorandum of understanding with ASAM for learning, remote learning and instruction for the 2021 school year.
Your motion. Move. Go with Robin, move, and Brandon.
I'm sorry.
Second, discussion.
This memorandum of understanding creates the protocols for how teachers, teachers will work if we are ever required to be all out to remote learn all of our students, so. Not trying to panic, but we felt that we needed to take care of it now just in case something leaves, does not know if it will be here.
Better safe than sorry. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
All right, Transportation Committee meeting report.
We had three items on the agenda, the first was to discuss the storage tank of DEF, which is diesel exhaust fluid currently in the building. But they have to open the door and leave a lot of heat, so they're looking at options on storing it outside, but it has to be kept above freezing. So, this girl had some suggestions, and then he's going to sharpen his pencil and see about other options as well. Possibly building a shed, heated, I mean heated tank. The second item was, no, was that enough?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The second item was about count week. Count week was actually October 5th through the 9th, which was the week before the fair, when we had many students still on remote learning. There will be another count in January, and that is what determines our state funding for transportation. There's two different ways that they do it, they do it by literally counting the students, and the other is how many miles we drive. It just always seems to fall either right on or right around there.
I thought I saw something somewhere where it was later this year, it was published somewhere that the count we used.
What was wrong on this agenda?
Yeah, one time they talked about, but then they, they came out with the good through the night, they said absolutely no, we've had to ask waiver before we called them.
I saw it somewhere, somebody published it, I think, the speaker last week. I remember saying, no, that's better than, yeah.
It would have been better because we was.
Probably somewhere in our district.
Right.
I don't know where, somewhere it was published. We've already had to submit the T1 report from it, so.
And then the last item was regarding the bus purchase, as Jill previously mentioned. Three new buses were purchased and delivered, they're not on the road, but that will be any day now, as soon as it gets through a final inspection, Jordy's ready to put them on the road. We got one estate grant for one of them, but it requires that we get rid of one of our old buses, and that can be done however we deem fit. And then the projection is, it's a five-year forecast, that next year we will buy two additional buses.
Is moving forward.
Yes, so that we can keep rolling.
The conversation before our feet is not half incredibly old buses. We've bought several buses over the last couple of years, I'm just curious.
Mrs. Young can ask that question to Mr. Lee, and Mr. Lee's going to forward me that latest spreadsheet that has, I'd say we're probably within, of our 14th on the road, I'd say we're probably at sixth that was, that were 2009 or older, so.
Gotcha, and then the rest are?
From 2009, so we got, we probably have our, after Mr. Lee will provide that number, he and I talked before, I'd say we probably got under the 14, we're probably gonna need them, that's still 10 years or newer.
Gotcha.
He estimated it was around the five-year, like in five to six years, we should have everything.
Back within the ten years.
Gotcha.
I used to mention that we usually sell those, the old ones, what we can do is we sell the old, the equivalent of the old typically. We'll do it as a, sell them in an auction or some other fashion, and then we usually get better. Historically, we've gotten more money that way than versus trading them.
I would have.
So as soon as we get the new one on the road, we'll do three of them out. I asked him how the temperature check stuff was going, it seemed to be going well, they had one thermometer that they had to send back, it was working right, and they replaced it. It's all going pretty smooth, so.
All right. Legislative meeting report, Mr. Kern.
Legislature's still on their election cycle recess, so there hasn't been a whole lot of developments since the last update, they will come back after the election next week. For the lame duck section, things to watch there will be the Kat Patterson plan, there's talk of trying to get that done in lame duck session. Which would be the overhaul, the overall school funding formula. I personally think that it's a pretty tight timeframe, it seems like, it seems like lame duck is probably going to be fairly short and limited in terms of their activity level. So I think it's probably very optimistic, I think they can get that done, particularly when, you know, there's a state budget cycle coming up to be introduced next February, it seems like. It'd be pretty practical for them to push that back a little bit and just take it up in the context of the overall state budget, rather than pass something second way in lame duck session, so. But we will see, I know a lot of the interested parties involved, including Representative Shear, who represents District right next door. Is still pushing, trying to get it done during lame duck session. Other than that, there is another bill in the Senate. Senate Bill 358, which deals with the pushing back the moratoriums on the testing and some of the restrictions that have been pushed back or suspended because of COVID, this would extend it another, another full school year, so that's still pending out there as well. Just talking about trying to get that done in lame duck session as well, so.
That's it. Thank you. Question, Mr. Kern? Student achievement list on board, Mr. Renier?
It was a good segue because one of the topics in the recent newsletter was exactly that, how assessments are gonna look moving forward, whether or not the criteria that, or not criteria, but you know, whether or not some of the changes that were made for this past, like back in the spring, are gonna be carried forward. There was a lot of discussion about making sure that assessing students this year, they specifically separate out academic assessments from accountabilities assessments, and there was, you know, a lot of discussion on how schools are handling absences from school, particularly, you know, COVID-related, whether or not schools are making appropriate accommodations for students who have to quarantine, or who maybe they're not sick, but somebody in their house is sick, so they have to stay home, they have to quarantine even if they're not sick, things like that, which, I know we've actually, that's on our list of topics later tonight, right? Another one, and this is something I'm curious to hear from, you know, from the leadership team, is how we're applying rules to remote learners, and specifically, like, you know, do we, do we do anything in terms of making students adhere to, and this would probably, I assume, only apply when there's like a video conference or, you know, a Zoom meeting or something, but do students have to adhere to the dress code, or, you know, not dress code, but attire standards? Presence of weapons or other prohibited paraphernalia, other people in the room, things like that, so just like something I was kinda curious about, if we've had, if you've seen any issues in that regard. But it's one of the hot topics right now, so. Outside of that, there was an awful lot about different avenues for students and for teachers to develop themselves remotely, using various, you know, different online trainings, but I can send out a list of everybody, if anybody's interested in that.
I'd like to bring you some, you may have to please. Building press report, Mrs. Marshall.
All right. So to give you a little bit of more detailed breakdown of the numbers, of the students that we had come back. So we had some students that came back in the middle of the nine weeks, if there were special circumstances that it was better for the students to be here to be able to receive the learning that they needed to receive. So we started out with 28 second graders that were remote, and only seven remained. We had 28 first graders start remote and five remain, and we had 24 kindergartners stay remote, start remote, and 17 remain. So our numbers are definitely down, and in regards to, you know, if we have noticed any issues with students in dress codes and stuff like that, at the primary, we have not, I have not had any teachers mention anything like that to me. At our level, a lot of the Google meets that happen are parent requests. So, you know, the parents typically set the kids up on it and walk away, so I have not had any teachers mention anything at the primary level about it, but not say that it doesn't happen, but nobody just said anything, but I'll make sure to just talk to the staff about it and let them know that if there is some kind of issue, to let me know. Something we definitely want to be vigilant about. You know, it, on Monday, you know, some kids have came in, but on Monday, it was really, not this Monday, last Monday, I'm sorry. It was really interesting to see the 47 students that we had come back on that one day at the same time, trying to mix that into our schedule and making sure that they felt comfortable walking in, a lot of those kids had never seen their teacher, had never even been down that hallway before. So it was definitely a different experience at the primary building, bringing all those kids in together, but the teachers were very thankful to have them back, and were able to get a lot of their assessments done last week. To kind of get a baseline of where they are now, and see what gaps we need to go, because we do have some from our students that have been remote at this point in time. So it's something that we're addressing, and we're trying to be very, very detailed in our approach to it. So this week, on Thursday and Friday, our mentors and our curriculum coordinator are going to be assessing all of our remote students. So we have signed up grade levels, at a time they'll come in for a two-hour block, and they will do all of our end-of-quarter assessments. They'll have to follow all the same protocol that every kid does in order to come into the building. And at this point, it's kind of at our level, if we can get the parents to bring them in, fantastic, we're gonna collect that information, if we can't, our kids can't drive themselves there. So we're just gonna have the attempt at it and hope that we have, we almost have everybody, we're only missing five kids at this point in time, so we're pretty excited that everybody else has signed up for the time slots. So we're happy that's gonna be happening this week. On Friday, you know, we are still having our Halloween parties at the primary school from 1:30 to 2:30, no visitors are allowed because our day, there are no breaks, and our bathrooms are scheduled down to the minute of when people are supposed to be there, our kids are gonna be wearing their costumes all day long, so they're gonna come in them, no masks, only the masks for code reasons. But we're excited to still be able to give them that, but we have very strict protocols for the parents of prepackaged food, and, you know, not having those visitors, but everyone is seemed really great about it. We'll also be honoring our students of the quarter, so at the primary, we have, the teachers have chosen students of the quarter for their in-class students, and also they've chosen children that have been learning remotely that have been extinguished at home as well. And then we'll release a video to the parents on Friday, since they're not able to be at our ceremony, we're putting a PowerPoint together of all of our Kinder and Chica Boomers and our students of the quarter, and we'll release that out so the parents can all see it. Because I know the kids are super excited. And then they will have lunch with me on Friday, so we'll be going into the art room socially distancing, it's a little different than normal, we normally do pizza. But instead, they're gonna be going through and getting their lunch, since we are on the free meals at this point in time, and then they're just gonna be given ice cream and a cookie as their treat at the end. So we're just in the bull swing and just trying to get all of our kids back acquainted to being, being back in the building.
Thank you. Mrs. Holbrook has said again tonight for Mrs. Wells, who is under weather, and Mrs. Holbrook, you're working on internship, so this is her opportunity to take care of two things, one session.
Yes. At the end of September, beginning of October, we did third and fifth grade gifted testing, and it went well, we had nine remote learners come in for that gifted testing. We also finished the third grade Fall English Language Arts AIR test, those were completed last week. In the second nine weeks, we had a total of 58 students return to in-person learning, with zero students choosing to go remote. That gives us 45 remote learners as a wrap right now, 10 in the third grade, 22 in the fourth grade, and 13 in the fifth grade. 13 of those students that returned came before the end of the first nine weeks due to habitual truancy with internet connectivity issues or not completing their work, and so they were able to come back before the end of the first nine weeks. Our K through five first nine weeks revised report cards will go home this Friday, and a letter explaining our improved report card will be sent home with them, detailing the changes for families. Our first nine weeks student award ceremony will also be virtual this Friday, and Mrs. Wells is going to hold a live Google Meet on Friday for those families whose students have been recognized, since they are not able to come in, and we will also be sharing out a video of the PowerPoint with those families. It is also our Halloween party day, and we will be wearing our costumes as well and having our parties throughout the day, each grade level has chosen a different time due to our schedules being a little different with lunch. We'll be holding virtual parent-teacher conferences next Tuesday, teachers have sent out their online signups, and we're excited to see and meet with our families virtually, even though we can't be face-to-face this year. And then third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers have worked and continue to work diligently to meet the needs of their students, they've all gone above and beyond to embrace Google Classroom and expand their use of technology, so Mrs. Wells just really wanted to give kudos to that.
Thank you. Mrs. Harper?
At the middle school this week, we're celebrating Rhythm Week, which are the.
which being is be happy, be brave, be direct free. So the show, it's a little bit smaller representation just because of COVID, but our student council is leading that with announcements in the morning and then we have a different thing each day that students have got to participate in. As Mrs. Holbrook mentioned, we do have parent-teacher conferences scheduled for next week. At the middle school, we will be, I believe all buildings will be remote or BFM. That information was texted out to parents at middle school this afternoon, as well as posted on the middle school website, so they can use the signup link to schedule a time and then tell us how they want their conference to be held. In the first nine weeks, we had 108 remote learners at the middle school. Currently, we have 42, so we had 66 middle school students come back to the building. Our breakdown right now is 12 in the sixth grade, 14 in the seventh grade, and 16 in the eighth grade. We had students come back for various reasons in the first nine weeks for habitual truancy that we did meet with the possible for time, the AIT meetings. And we have really good communication from parents contributing to their child's plan, promoting better attendance, so that that was good that we had the meetings and intervene at that point. One thing that you might hear, and I communicated this with all parents today, that it needs to be communicated with, but at the middle school, because we had 66 students come back, that would make huge influx from what we thought with our master schedule. So we do have some students that have taken virtual elective, which is different from the remote elective. Teammates, there are some questions about that. That was all emailed to each individual parent and student today, along with the monitor of that course. So our plan at the middle school is for this nine weeks, students to complete this virtual elective through Florida Virtual. And I created a breakdown for each lesson and a pacing guide, so the monitor can communicate that with students with parents each week, the email, to determine if their student is on pace to complete the course. But with that being said, our goal is by semester time for a high school teacher to potentially come down to the middle school, so we have another teacher for a semester elective for the third and fourth weeks. But something that we did not predict, with all the students returning, we're definitely happy that we've got all these students back in the building. But that's just something that you guys might hear and it was all communicated.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hen.
Seniors today, I don't know how many of you are familiar with 33 Corridor. That's the Federal County County Association. They began meeting today with our seniors to prepare them for the readiness seal. So Kerry Stone was here from 33 Corridor to meet the first group of seniors today. So we're excited about that. And we'll expand, put more kids in that program as the year goes along. For, as far as our numbers, number one, parent-teacher conferences are 12 to 7:30 on Tuesday. We are doing it all virtual or phone, so we're sending out Google meets to parents and they can use their kids' devices or they can call in and they'll do group conferences. I need you to correct, I informed Mr. Buckley incorrectly, the Chipotle Night Race Against Cancer is at the Main Street Chipotle, not the Memorial Drive Chipotle. So I corrected that for Mrs. Feliciano. Remote, we had 113 remote the first nine weeks of the high school. We actually had 44 return. However, at the high school, we have more requests go online. Today, I received three requests to go online, actually. So we had 44 return, but we had 12 go remote that didn't start the year remote in the high school, plus three more today that requested it will start, two will start this week and one next week. So that'll put us to 84 remote here the second nine weeks in the high school. So that's, and then just a little quick update for the career center. The career center is still in their remote, their hybrid, not remote, their hybrid kind of process, where they are one week the juniors report, one week the seniors report. So for those career center students, they're a little bit different of a schedule of reporting every other week.
Thank you. So from my calculations, we've had about 229 students return, which is over half, which I think is a positive. Obviously, it creates some social distancing issues and real concerns for us. However, I think your, our decision to let them return it in the ninth week as opposed to the semester, like many other schools have chosen to do, I think this allows, obviously allows our kids a much quicker return to every day's school like they know it, like it was intended. So I'm glad to see those numbers.
Mr. Hen, why did students go remote thirty days ago?
It's a variety of reasons. Some, since we have had more than the other buildings, at one point in time, I think we had 56 students on quarantine. I think some students don't want to take that risk of being on quarantine. And so that was one email I received today, of they don't want to increase their risk of being placed in quarantine, of being in here in classes. Some say they live with, one, a couple of weeks ago went remote because their grandmother moved in with them and they did not want to be coming to school and be exposed and then go home and be around the grandmother. So it's a variety of reasons.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's, every student really has a different reason and some are COVID-related and some aren't. But that's why we have the academy before too, because we knew that not every student wanted to learn in the brick and mortar every day. So some of those reasons why students went to the academy in the previous years are still happening, you know, and some, but many are COVID-related.
The academy is different than the online?
Yes, we, the academy really is, is kind of taking a little bit of a different role. I think it'll return more hopefully as we, the protocols and things settle down and as we continue the remote learning. But it's really helped us having that in place already. But we have fewer kids on Florida Virtual, that's not our only, obviously not our only academy option. But it's a little bit different of a role.
The Florida Virtual is really for kids who are true homeschool kids versus kids who just didn't want to come to brick and mortar? Explain that to me.
Or online kids. Or a year ago, online students. And remember, homeschool students are students who apply at the ESC and are approved and therefore their obligation to find their curriculum is done at home.
So they're doing the Florida Virtual still?
No. Homeschool students have nothing to do with us. They have left us and they're going over to one more student.
You mean students working at home?
So who's doing Florida Virtual now? I'm confused about that. I was just thinking about this the other day, like.
Mrs. Carter has some in her middle, she explained her middle school elective just for those nine weeks. But we have, we still have credit recovery needs, that those students complete their courses through Florida Virtual for credit recovery. We have to provide some flexibility for different needs and students as far as not being able to fit courses into their schedule and not be able to do certain things as well. So we still have that flexibility needs with Florida Virtual. Not as much for the remote, that's why I say our Florida Virtual numbers are down this year.
Because those kids are doing the online.
Right, they're working through Google Classroom with our teachers. So, but like I said, they're down, but we still have credit recovery needs in terms of graduation, recovery, and, and like I said, for different reasons, we have some students still taking their core academics through Florida Virtual for a variety of different reasons and therefore they can't fit in Google Classroom or that just that their needs are what they need to do.
How much are our numbers down on that?
On Florida Virtual? Full-time academy students? I'm not 100% sure of how many are working full remote. We have several students who are juniors and seniors. That's the majority of our students who are only juniors on that, to where they are under a certain, well, we define them as being credit deficient, to where they can't be in a full schedule, like they could be in just seven classes and be eligible to graduate because they're that far behind in their credits. So we put them on Florida Virtual so they can kind of work at a faster pace and not take, not wait a whole year to complete their credits. So that's the only way we can fast pace them to graduate. So I think normally we're at 26 to 30, I think, as the report Mr. Dalton provides. But I think this year, we're probably more around 18 to 20 range. I don't know if he sent me the end of the first nine, he normally updates every first nine weeks, but probably 18 to 20 still of just full-time Florida Virtual students.
I was just curious, with the online, who is still doing the Florida Virtual?
Yeah.
But those students that we've lost didn't go to those other online programs?
No, not the Google Classroom, the store students.
They're still our students.
Yeah, no one did that.
Again, and that's why I say it's next year is going to be very interesting with the protocols and how we continue to do the online learning, will we return students to Florida Virtual? Will we continue with Google, you know, that's going to be a very interesting discussion of how we handle our remote students next year.
Right, because if they go to Florida Virtual, then they don't have the opportunity to go back and forth versus the lives.
Unless they come in and work in Mr. Dalton's room, they could physically come in and get help in his room, but not, not go back and forth from the classroom backup.
Right, right, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Since you were doing the math, okay, so 229 return, what was the original number that started remotely?
I don't get it, 24, I think, what I added. Seems to ring something to me. New business.
Well, first item of new business is to approve hiring of our new treasurer for our district. If we can do that well, it'd be Lana Fairchild, who is here with us tonight. So if he didn't realize that's who was sitting there, then it will be our new treasurer once we approve our motion here. So once we do that, I don't know if you, if you want to say anything, but we'll go ahead and do the, get the protectors out of the way here first. So is there a motion?
What? I'll do it.
Robert Lou, is there a second? Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Sort of advanced to Mainland Fairchild. I coached here back in early 2000, first year as volleyball coach, so I'm excited to return to Amanda. I told the board 15 times, Amanda's near, dear to my heart. My sister also worked here for about 10 years with Ron and Ron and then Deathheart. She was a trainer. So I'm excited to come back and I feel very blessed to be a part of this and it's exciting to hear what else is going on tonight at the school district and certainly look forward to the years to come. So thank you very much for having me. And I started my number.
Number 23, I believe. I just hope her daughter enjoys my jokes as much as Mrs. Bradford's daughter enjoys my jokes, because they're pretty bad.
She's younger. She's 15.
They won't see, they won't.
She's a corporate neck, so you never know.
Yeah. Congratulations.
All right, well, yes, welcome to the board. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We had a very good search process with that and some really good candidates. We'll have to work your way to the top, so. Our second item of new business is to approve the amended appropriations, which is attachment four. Is there a motion? Robert Lou, second?
A second.
Justin Second, discussion.
So on the permanent, on the amended appropriations, there were only three funds that were changed. The O22 was increased by $19,841 due to unemployment and workers' comp costs. The OO3, which is our permanent improvement, that was our largest increase, $316,675. That's due to the projects that were approved at the past board meetings. And then the O34, we increased that $60,500. We've had numerous upgrades. We've upgraded the air filters. What was that called?
The air exchange.
Yes, yeah, the air exchange system, controls modification. And we've had a couple of issues with our elevators, so we've decided to upgrade those controls so they're not, only one person can work on them. So we've tried to change that up. And then we've been dealing with the electric issues. So we've had a lot of things coming out of that facility's maintenance, which again, that O34 is coming through money from our property tax to help do maintenance on our facility as well, our bond is still with us.
Speeding the elevators, Mr. Vick, is the K2 elevator working now?
No. And we are still waiting on the board to be rebuilt.
Someone asked me about it the other day and I knew that that was the board issue that did know. Do we have a timeframe on that?
Yeah, one, the next conversation takes place on about 7:35 in the morning, so.
Oh, so we're getting there.
Time has come.
Remind me again of the O3 projects, what that would constitute.
That is our track, our scoreboard, and what was the other project that we just? Scoreboard, track, and.
Chiller. No, Chiller.
Chiller, yes.
The wall will come out of the O3 wall, right, Mrs. Bradford?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, 37 Chiller.
Are we good then in that account?
Not.
Account for that, or we'll have to do another amended appropriation?
We're doing amended when that project is done also. We don't have that total amount yet, do we, Mr. Vick?
The gym wall? What was, what was, did was a rebuild. But I still have not completed my references yet.
Okay. That, that one will be close. We may or may not have to.
Okay. We talked, we'll talk about that later, no mind the story.
Sorry.
Any other discussion on approving amended appropriations? That roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Our discussion items, we've got several different second readings of policies to do. Change the policy, I may change policy, GCPD suspension determination of certificated staff members, which is attachment five.
The last meeting, we did not have, no one made suggested changes of this policy, this particular one. So I believe it comes back as, or was it?
Well, I don't think there was last meeting, but I looked through it and the only, and the only thing I thought, I wasn't sure if we did or not, because I noticed in the termination, it crossed out teacher and put a professional staff in the group and yet then there were still like three different instances where it says teacher.
Okay, should it be? Professional staff number all the way through?
All the way through, yeah.
Yeah, consistent.
Yeah, there's years on. There's.
At least three.
Okay. Teachers, I know we use this, but I suppose it should be professional staff members. There is one. Anything else? Need one? Move on to the second one, change of policies, GCPD suspension determination of classified staff members, attachment six.
And I believe this matches the language it made ask about to try to get it so made. And it was kind of cumbersome combination of hearing is required prior to the suspension of the motion. That change has been made, it appears as it was suggested.
Everybody got any? We move on to C, change of policy, JED, student absence and excuses, attachment seven.
Again, chair has added the green that we had suggested at the last meeting.
On page three of seven, first, the bottom.
On page three of seven, first, the bottom, very common issue is, from here down, we have a lot of people wanting this new policy.
No, no. Uh, what was?
I think we out that last time, too.
We are not leaving the next week, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just the items that are in the other list.
The things that are crossed, I guess.
Anything else in that? Now we'll move on to change policy JEGA, permanent exclusion.
And I put a new copy of page one in front of you tonight. I had asked Cheryl to take out the, if the victim is a district employee, she understood me to take out all of number two. So, uh, if we, remember we discussed that the number two at the top of the page, it should be, um, the last part of it, it says if the victim is a district employee. There's no reason it would have to say if the district, if the victim is a district employee, that can be regardless of who that person is.
So you're, so number two is not being removed entirely?
No.
Just as far as. Just as a reference to a district employee.
The green you're taking out?
No, I'm taking out, I was gonna say Cheryl forgot all the green. It should be just the last part, if the victim is a district employee, that's taken out.
So it's the third line of it?
Gotcha.
In other words, it doesn't.
So two is staying.
Yes, two is staying.
Okay, gotcha.
Just taking out the.
Uh, Mrs. Young had asked a question to me, um, but in the first paragraph, the board may say the permanent exclusion of the student, 16 years of age or either convicted in criminal court or adjudicated due by juvenile court, court, any of the following offenses that occur on school grounds or at a school function.
Some of those, they shouldn't be in jail for that.
Well, and if you look down, and that was Mrs. Young's, I think.
What, murder?
Why, why are we talking, why does it have to be here at school? If you look at the paragraph, the second paragraph that starts at the superintendent underneath the yellow paragraph, that gives me the authority to remove them, exclude them regardless of where they at happen. And you're correct, if it was, any of those heinous crimes, we would remove them regardless. And more likely, they wouldn't be free to be here anyway, so.
Anything else with attachment eight? Under attachment nine, change the policy of AC, non-discrimination.
And I don't believe there's any suggestions.
Other discussion items, gym wall.
Um, as I indicated, we had a bid opening, we could go, um, my name, and, um, of all the bid openings I've ever done, this is the first time it's ever happened, someone had sent us a quote, an estimate, um, that did not make it to our office by the time we read over the bids. However, the bid was in our building. It was, the company had refused the return receipt, did not want one signed, so therefore, when our staff got it, went to the bell room like every other bell desk. Uh, however, checking the postal service, they weren't here on time. Fortunately, we're on full time, I'm looking at, they are not the apparent low. So the apparent low remains in place, um, it, it came in at $83,000, $83,000. It was $55,000 for, um, the main quote of the four factors, and then the order came in at like $28,000, it's like $83,000 in total. So, um, all along the numbers we talked about, the architect that told us, we can look at $100,000. So, um, the, the parent second low came in at around $98,000. So we're in a number that's close, um, I've been honest, two other quotes were extremely high compared to the two lower bids, so, um.
Is Cheryl lying?
Um, a lot of times, um, companies will tell me they don't really need to work that bad. So, um, if they're, if they don't need it real bad, they'll shoot a number just in case they do get it.
It's called their, I don't really want this price.
But if I do get it, I would. Yes, and then, uh, in talking with the apparent low, um, I mean, I, I brought it up about why he was so much lower. And, um, he says that he feels very comfortable with the bids. He had some hungry contractors and he's very, very ready to go. He does not see an issue with that quote, so.
We, we had an invitation for bid, a bid opening at the end of September, and we ran into the same situation. There was a huge spread between the highs and lows, and we got very similar stories when we acquired about it, so.
Architect on this particular job was there within a probably Mr. Fernandez, SHP. But SHP is totally the same thing, that you will, you will get that bid who, um, the scope is not real intense on the music room, you know, it's, it's, it's a room. But he's saying you will find people who don't really want the job, but they're gonna put it then just so they can say, if I get it, I can keep my people working and, um, have work for them to do, and then you, you get the competitive price, the competitive bid that will be more realistic. So once I get the references all in place, uh, I would, if you have any questions about 77 gym, please let me know. I would like to make a recommendation that the, that all, if everything checks out, because it makes sense, so.
So the three versus the five pilasters. Pillaster, is that like a bracing thing?
That is, um, all it is, is they, they don't, it's, um, basically a column that will be, have a foundation that will be adhered to the wall, all the way to the ceiling. Um, outside, yeah, outside. And then it will be in order, it doesn't make the bow, it'll act in place, it keeps the bow from moving out. So, um, we'll have the bow forever, um, however, it prevents it from being any sort of damage structurally. Um, the reason they did it as a alternate, um, somehow, potaster four and five will be set somewhere inside where the steps are now, the outside exterior steps, the egresses. That's the reason, um, one architect thought the three would be fine, the architect they worked with thought we should, uh, put the alternate in just in case we would decide we wanted to do it. They're both comfortable with the fact that three, um, would suffice, but we're looking at, uh, belts and suspenders here together, so. Come in, the bid it came in at, I mean, it's not, it's not a number that I don't know that prevents us from doing, but it's that, the alternates.
Is this, uh, price included, again, part of the issue with the, the leak in the roof then on that wall? Is because of this bowing issue?
Yes, but that leak has been fixed.
Okay.
That was fixed by.
Other than the roof?
Yes, whenever here. Uh, yes, they, they, and we have a contract with them now, of a maintenance contract, that they keep, upkeep it and make sure the drains are cleaned and water is outstanding. That led to some of that issue.
So they think that was a different issue, not necessarily related to the, the bowing?
No, they, uh, the reason that the wall was leaking was water was standing on the roof. So it would have come through there regardless of the bow or the. It's how I explained it to them. Uh, and we have not had any issues since, since they, it would have been the pot after. The 77 gym is modeling and, um, they have the new grates on the drains. They have new memory that have been placed, so, um, we think we have that.
Discuss that.
We think Condon is also going flat roofs over the food service, as to make sure that that doesn't happen. And get their own inspection department, they also.
And that's over the food and the main.
Yes.
Vinnie Sports, um, we talked, um, about, um, permitting, not permitting, um, Vinnie Sports blew this winter, um, you know, at one time I felt comfortable, uh, obviously now with numbers increasing, I am a little concerned. Uh, I've talked to, again, this is kind of our drawback regards to our void, our bidding void and girls' basketball does not have an association per se, that I can talk to as one person where in wrestling I do. I've tried to get, uh, I've spoken with wrestling people, uh, about the charge. Uh, Mr. Kern and I talked about regards, I think, depending now, boys, right, you're helping. So we talked about the charge of, while our facilities get cleaned, likely, I'm not sure it's getting cleaned like we probably need to if we have more people in the restrooms and move bathroom, or lockers, locker, uh, not locker, but, uh, gymnasiums. So I just put it out there, we talked about, uh, maybe an hour night overtime that would take to, and I, I'll be honest, the one group has talked to me, has talked about the hardship that we're through for that group. An hour a night or five nights a week, you know, it's, living about, and that's about $200 a week. So, um, you know, over a 10-week period, it's $2,000 bill, if you're talking about that. And, and we'll have to, because when we're using, when we, we have, we have boys and girls and wrestling using the 77s, it'll have to be some splitting in the middle and all that, so I mean, it's, it's.
I guess my question, I have several questions about it. One is just this year, number of people in the building by adding the Vinnie Sports concerns people who are headed towards, or this far from a level three, who are crazy to not think they're not going to be there by, when Vinnie Sports will start, end of, middle of November, I would assume, um, full swing, usually by Thanksgiving. So I'm really concerned about the number of people coming into the school. Plus you're having junior high ball games over there that you're limiting who could come to. And when I've been over there, when my kids still play junior high, that thing was just packed with kids coming and going and parents and coaches and, I don't know, I know cheerleaders never get their own space because they're sharing a space. Now they're sharing a space with kids who are from outside the building.
Well, as of right now, our cheerleaders are not sharing a space.
Are they going to be alone now?
Yes. The only sharing they would do would be with the softball and baseball team after the first year, but we were able to work out last year when that went. The Vinnie wrestling would be moved all to the north balcony. And we've talked about our communication, uh, who we have our talk to, has been players and coaches only. Because sometimes we do have people who come and wait in the lobby or, you know.
Oh, that's packed.
And I just can't, we just can't do that.
Well, I mean, I, I think frankly, if we're gonna do it, I think we should do it, I think we should allow, continue to allow for it. But I think these teams need to agree to abide by OHSA COVID protocols the same way that any middle school or varsity sport has to, right? So they should have a check-in table, they should be checking temperatures, there are, you know, practices have to be close to parents. It's only, you know, for sure only players and coaches, um, all those types of things. I, I do think though, that if, to be very frank, if we're gonna charge an hour of overtime a night, that we won't have Vinnie Sports, they can't, they cannot afford to do that.
Can't we use the CARES Act money, since this is additional cleaning above and on what we would normally do? This is supposed, it's strictly COVID-related, the, the, as far as the necessity of the additional cleaning.
Home school support, yeah.
Well, it's, it's, we're not, but we're not funding the sport, we're funding the cleaning of the building.
Or the cleaning wouldn't be necessary, wasn't for the non-school.
Well, I guess that.
I don't think it would be prohibited by the CARES Act. I think, I think you'd be surprised, I'm pretty sure that you could use it.
Do we have enough money? I don't want to take that money that we can use it for.
I was, if I thought it was, I thought we were talking like $2,000.
A week, not a week?
No, $200 a week, it's $2,000 over 10 weeks, which is really not, it's a lot of money to a small group.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not a lot of money for the school if we have CARES Act funding, $2,000, which I could almost, I, I would be shocked if we couldn't use it for that purpose.
Well, I, so explain to me why there is additional cleaning needed, because we're talking about facility that are getting cleaned.
We don't typically have to clean the balcony.
Okay, so the wrestling program for the balcony.
And the cheerleaders.
Well, see, the cheerleaders would be, but then I know where you're coming from, it's, it's our students that would, that typically, that balcony typically is cleaned when they're using it, so.
And they have weaved a couple of.
Right, and this is the reason I'm trying to, to massage this so that one group doesn't get beat up and the other one doesn't, so other two got them.
Because the gyms are going to get cleaned.
Exactly, and that, that's where you're coming from, right? The gyms are getting cleaned, not, but they're getting.
So you're, you're saying that all of the, the sports, you know, would pay, would basically break it up and that way one specific sport or team is not.
Yes.
Bearing a burden.
I mean, if there's a per participant, I mean, if you work out the math on the overall cost of additional cleaning and have a per participant surcharge, that might be.
See, I have no idea how many participants we have. Yeah.
That's my other question is, like, if you go over there, how are you going to keep the Vinnie teams out of that main hallway and interacting with the parents who require, people, I should say, not necessarily parents, going to watch a junior high sport? They typically practice at the same time as that junior high sport.
But, but typically, the, the Vinnie person does not stand out from the lot.
Yeah, they do.
Well, I, I, I'll be honest, when I'm over there, I usually see families more so than the participants, fewer participants are in the balcony.
I think if you tell them it comes down to you being able to have your sport or not, they'll still adhere to it.
Exactly.
I feel fairly confident that they would adhere to that.
Because of that stuff, um, because I can't, we can't have people throughout the building. Uh, and I want, once we have custodian, it's been an airplane, I can't take chances of having the loose child just happen to be trying to get in every classroom, the fingers on going on, and also, um, and, and I guess my question, guidance-wise, is what happens when we go to red now? I have.
There's a big difference between level three and level three.
And there's a big difference between us being able to pull off at school than outside, video, or not, I mean, or having, not outside that video organization in general. I, I just, I, I, obviously the exposure piece, because they're not paid to do stuff.
What changes for OHSA if we go to a level four, do we know, or does it change at all their recommendations?
Not that I know, I have not seen any because of it being so county-specific.
I didn't know if it, if it can change as far as like, whether you can play somebody or not play somebody or practice or not practice based on your level, if you get to level four.
There's, something happened too, that they changed, uh, as I said, I'm talking about practicing and playing. Prior to about three weeks ago, we were only allowed to play one team per day. And they changed that to permit multiple team tournaments, which, um, I'll be honest, there, there's, there's a great concern on mine. If we've ever had to fill the gym up, it's always been during a wrestling tournament, more so than a basketball game. So, um, that, that part of it creates a great concern in me having spectators. And I've been out, I'm looking at the mid-state league meeting, we can go Wednesday, um, there are some schools, smaller schools, smaller, higher division schools. There are some schools, smaller schools, smaller high division schools, that are not permitting spectators at all from the basketball, whether sports.
Oh, not at all?
Pardon?
Not at all.
And not at all, so. But, I, I'll be honest, I have concerns about invitationals when you have anywhere from eight to 12 teams. You're creating a large mass of people to try to control.
Because with the all sports, you were supposed to play teams that were within your district or, and what did you play nearby schools, not?
And that worked right until the first time the school had to cancel COVID, they went all over the state of Ohio to find someone to play, so. Yeah, so, Mr. Hen, the other question.
I just, I think, I've been involved with the scheduling, I'm a vity parent myself. And I think, logistically, we've all worked through the one-way traffic and trying to keep, keep people separated. I think what our vity parents are going to have to understand is that. As much as we want to have as much practices as we could, you know, as we have in previous years, I think we're going to have to, everyone's got to understand, most is better than nothing. We may not get all that we want. I think we're going to be very careful just in scheduling of when we have. A high school or middle school event happening either in the 77 gym or gym one. And I'm not saying that we couldn't schedule things at that time, but being very, um. I don't know, strict, maybe not the right word, but direct of how people enter a building, where people enter a building. I think vity parents should not enter the west entrance on a, if they have practice that goes to the gym two. They should not, I know a lot of vity parents after the game, after the practice they're with, like to go over to the varsity game. You know, in our varsity right now, in our gym one, varsity JV, you enter in through the cafeteria, you exit out because it's one-way traffic. That's part of the OHSAA protocols, which takes you into that hallway in between gym one and gym two. So, there's going to have to be some logistics that I think we could work through, but I think. That's going to have to be the message to vity parents is that we're going to try to get the gyms open as much as possible if you guys move forward with that. But it may not be, there may be some restricted times because we're restricting parents and grandparents to come and watching games. We can't have other people all over the building, you know, and so. I think logistically, there's just going to be some things we have to work through of use hallway A, you know, this entrance here, or, you know, just designate different spots. So, we'll have to be very creative and smart about.
And we'll have to get that communicated to the coaches so they can give it to parents, because. I'll use Mr. Rene to throw him under the bus here, but to his point about it's either or. I mean, you either follow the protocols and the recommendation and requirements, or your team cannot participate in playing or arranging. It's just that simple, because otherwise, as Mr. Hen has pointed out, when you're going to limit your 82 visitors for varsity boys or girls basketball game. The last thing a mom and dad want to see is somebody just from the other gym just happened to walk in and sit down and, you know, their mom or dad, they get to see. So, it, it's very important we get that communicated to our.
And how will the protocols be, who's going to be in charge to make sure that? Like, the OHSAA protocols are followed by the vity sports?
Great question.
You know, I think that's a big thing, and I'm fairly comfortable with them to do the OHSAA and like Mr. Hen was talking about. One-way traffic and maybe limiting no more when there's other ballgames going on, which we have never done before. I'm okay with that, but who's, who's that gatekeeper?
Well, and see, and that's one of the things that I think.
Is that you?
Well, what I thought you said, um, I'm not saying it can't be, but my thing is, it goes right back to when we went through our first issues of, of exposure. You know, when we went to our coaches and we said, where are your check-in sheets? And they handed them to you, I, that was a pretty good feeling, you know what I'm saying, that, that someone, they didn't like anything, uh. I was going, I'm just going to start next week, or I'm going to start tomorrow, they handed us protocols, they, you know. So, we knew who had them and who had not, and I think there's going to be some checks and balances made. You know, I don't know that we can't, I'm not suggesting for a minute that I dictate there to be an association made with boys and girls vity basketball. Maybe con, maybe we can create contact people that, that we can go to to say, I don't expect them to be the gatekeeper, but when, when I say, or when Mr. Evans or Mrs. Grant or Mrs. Cochran or somebody, or. You know, whoever has to say, where's your protocol sheets? You know, I don't want them to have to go back to the back hallway and make up three nights where the sheets, you know what I'm saying? I, I, I think it's how we'll have to create, and we can do that here. That's all I need to create protocol requirements, recommendations, guidelines, whatever you want to call it, so that we can make sure that it's all followed.
Who would be able to do that, I feel like the basketball program, I mean, it's, the wrestling program has that, they have that continuity piece. And it, it benefits them greatly, so I feel like it wouldn't be that much of a, of, you know, an imposition to tell, you know, these basketball teams. You know, you have to kind of come together, have some sort of association and, and, you know, to make it happen. I mean, I'm sure given the, the, like you said, it's, it's either you do it or, or you don't get to, you don't get to play. I, I feel very strongly that we should give the parents and the students the opportunity. And then it's theirs to succeed or fail, and, but if we tell them no from the outset, then, then they're never even getting that option, they're never even getting the chance. And obviously, if we go red, things change, and we would have to, you know, probably look at how we would handle that, but.
I, I, I think that Mrs. Pond is going to set the doors so that if your practice starts at six, we get over at 5:45 and it closes at six, you know what I'm saying? So, again, that prevents people from walking through the door and just meandering through the building without us knowing. So, you know, we, once we get those schedules created, it, it does help us. Now, obviously, you know what happens when the door closes at six, they start going around the building, if they find one that's open, which we have basketball game at night. They'll find that west entry open, and again, that's where I hope the coaches are saying, you can't knock, because you haven't been checked in, we're not stopping to check in. So, I just, I mean, I think if you would like, I'll set the protocols, the parameters up, and then we can get it to you so that we know how, how people are going to flow in and out of the building.
Yeah.
What about the expense piece then?
Can we, can we look into whether or not we can use CARES Acts money for that? I would be shocked, I'd be shocked if we couldn't.
What about, so we, what about those getting the, the.
The games?
I don't know what's the names.
I mean, here again, I go back to, if it means they get to play or they don't, we might have to basically, I, I, I don't have to say no. No spectators, which would, I recognize, I'm, you know, I'm a parent, my daughter doesn't play any sports yet, that would be a total buzzkill. But, you know, if it's, if it's the only way, because especially with wrestling, you, when you have a meet, you've already got, you're going to have a meet capacity for a gym. Just almost with just the participants. But, here again, give them the option, say, look, if you, you know what? You can have the, you can have the meet, but you can't have spectators, or have nothing. And I'm sure that those kids and the parents of those kids would rather them get to do it. And then they can just, maybe, you know, we can livestream it or something like that.
I don't know.
So, like a wrestling meet, I know right now, you know, they have multiple teams that come in, you know, career or different schools. So, if they limited it to two, you still think that that would put the capacity over so even a parent couldn't get in?
It's not about not wanting people in, it's about, well, I get, it is about the amount of people.
So, how many are going to be at a varsity basketball game, didn't it say 84?
Eighty-two on home side, I think it's 64.
Okay. So, that doesn't count kids on floor?
No.
That's what you want to say.
Which Mr. Rene brought in the part about participants, where you're keeping that, I mean, you, you do have to.
They could count those in, don't you?
Somewhere on, that'd be counted, for capacity purposes.
Yeah, and then like the kids on sidelines of the football game.
Well, yeah, because in a basketball game, you've got, you know, 10 or 12 players on, on a team, you know, so. But wrestling meet, if you've got six schools there.
I can't see six schools, I'm thinking two, I, I don't know, but.
You have your wrestling meets, it'll be like.
Yeah, wrestling meets.
A lot more difficult in terms of the number of people, I think, when you look at vity basketball, it's just too keen.
Right. But when you have these invitationals for wrestling.
Let me work on the number of, of what can be here.
Okay, because I, I was just thinking, I wouldn't want to right out the gate say, no spectators unless we know that we can't have them.
Sure, that's, that's fair.
I know.
We also.
That wasn't my suggestion, huh?
Before we all got the electronic tickets with volleyball, the first couple of games would go to, you'd go to the, you know, to the desk and they'd just have, you know, for regular high school volleyball, my experience. They would just have the list of the team, you know, the players on each team with two check marks next to it, you know? And so, somebody would come in and they'd say, who, who's your player, and they'd say who it was, and they'd check you, and then they'd check you, and then that's it. You're only allowed two people for each player, so. I mean, that could be an option for the vity kids as well, I mean, I don't think those electronic tickets could work. But, but that could be an option too, where you just say. Two, two per player or whatever, and then, you know, each team has to make sure they furnish a list of their players to whoever's checking. But again, that works for basketball, but, you know, for wrestling, we know that all the teams there are.
Right.
One thing about the wrestling program is they're very organized.
Right.
They're very organized.
Which is, which is a problem.
I know, I know that.
They're so well organized, there's some.
So, just out of, like, just out of curiosity, I know when, when vity basketball's rolling around, we're doing practice up in the, up in the little gym up at the primary. Typically, you know, there's people coming in the side door of the gym, there's people coming down, whatever the other entrance is, down there, just down to the gym and going up and down the hallway and everything. Would it be just the gym entrance and it closes off and nobody can go down, like, oh, of course, the bathroom is there, it could be a challenge.
Well, see, there's bathrooms.
There's doors.
There's a ba, there's a bathroom, a lot of gymnasiums in the primary building, and we'd never have to go beyond.
Well, I know, there's those little bathrooms there, that's what I mean, but I mean, so they would still be able to come in.
Oh, and that door.
And go in that little hall right there next to the gym with those people. I never went anywhere else before anyways, but there were a lot of people that would come in and change and big bags and stuff and all piled down through the hallway that goes right in.
I think if you set the expectations on what we're talking about, the protocols.
Yeah.
Everything else has changed this year, people are going to be. So that they can play, if they want to play.
Do a little schematic that you hand out to the coaches, like, to hand out all the parents and everything that for practice, here's where you enter. Here's where you change if you need.
This is where you'll stand outside.
Here's where you exit, yeah.
Well, that's what they don't put football, they go in, then you go out, do the visitor team, you use that entrance.
Does things change when it goes to red?
Where is it red? No, I'm just, you mean like the county goes red?
Yes.
Or our district?
Well, since they don't do it district, they do it like county, so it would be.
But we can see the difference, right?
Correct.
Because didn't we, when we made the decision to start in-person learning, wasn't it county red?
Yes.
Yeah, I kind of go back to, you know, I always try and give the parents as much of the decision-making authority as possible. So, to me, rather than us just blatantly say, no, you don't get to do this, um, which, I mean. We should try and give them as much of the ability to make the decision of whether or not they should carry on or not. Obviously, there has to be a cutoff point, I mean, but if we're still in school, like you, like you mentioned, I mean, we started, we decided to come back five days a week in person when we were red.
Well, here's my only statement for that. Education is required regardless of whether it's remote or in-person. Vity basketball, vity wrestling is not required.
That's, yeah, that's a perfectly fair statement.
And, and that's.
If we were to start to jeopardize, we would. With the, that would be the cutoff. I think they need to do whatever OHSAA is doing at the time, that would, those would be the same requirements for any vity sport. And those meetings with any other team, if one of those students tests positive, they're done for about 14 days, just like our football team did, that there would be no questions asked, they would not be practicing.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's.
I mean, we just kind of have to do that, and that's what we did for our high school team, we need to do that for them, just so they understood that. So, I'm assuming we would know since that student is a student in school.
That's true.
Mr. Hen? I have a question, I've been on this, when we have a student test positive. It's Mr. Dick, myself, sitting in that conference room over there, calling the health department to report and send the list of students who need to be quarantined to the health department. So, I go back to, who's doing that? That, that's my question, who's ensuring that that vity coach calls and those kids aren't showing up to school the next day? That, that's a huge concern of mine, if a student does or if a coach does test positive. Who's calling health department to give that list? I would just say, A, we know who's doing that.
And if they're one of our students, our principal would have called anyway, wouldn't they have because of, during their building? Right?
Would they get a call, is that what you're asking?
No, Mr. Hen was saying, who would report it to the health department, and I said. They'd test positive as a student over a building, not necessarily a vity ballplayer.
They're all students.
That would just.
They only, they only, they're the teacher and the coach.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is though, is, is that, that's funny, if they're a student, if they're a student in class, I know what their class, if they're a student athlete in grade seven through 12, I know what sport they signed up for. Mrs. Marshall, Mrs. Wills do not know if a student is going to basketball practice or wrestling practice in the evening. So, they would not know to report that to the health department, that would depend on, and I'm, I'm not saying any of our coaches wouldn't report that. I'm just saying that's depending upon a non-school employee reporting it correctly to the health department. That's where I think a vity board solves that, where they are reporting it to a higher being, I guess, and that, you know, and that kind of concept. But that is just throwing out logistic questions, you talked about reporting a positive cases, that's just, and I think that's workable. That's just, again, that's another protocol they say of entering the building, exiting the building, I think we have to make sure that our coaches understand the importance of that, because that. Contains it and continues to season for everybody, you know, that, that's just important and that.
So, can't we require the vity sports to provide a roster, a team, just like we do our seven through 12s? I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to do in these times.
No, yeah.
I mean, either you're on the team or you aren't on the team, and you would be affected if there was a COVID.
We can start making protocols.
Because most of them make teams anyway, I mean, they cut from vity basketball all the time. So, I don't know what vity wrestling does, but I know vity basketball does, so they have a definite roster after.
Yeah, that's not true, I mean, they, they sign up, they, you know.
For vity wrestling?
Yeah, I mean, they, they cut, they actually cut the number of students that they allowed to sign up this year because of COVID.
So, they should have a roster.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I will put that together, and we will start sharing them before we can find out.
I know our, the temperature, like, these are out here, they seem like they're always on.
Yes, they are.
The ones at the primary, or the ones up there, see, I've been in the building.
Seventy-seven, yeah.
It's only that, are those something that the coaches, whatever, says to for vity, like, if kids come in, they can, they're always on.
You don't move them, and they're always there, just like, I mean, I can just tell you, boys basketball, same, like, you tell you what we've already talked about, it's creating a binder, exactly like. A varsity sport coach or middle school sport coach has with your roster, your check-in, all that document, like, we've already talked about this.
I'm not, I'm not.
I don't think it would have to be a legal thing we require.
Right.
Right, so they had a fever, they would not get to go in that night, maybe somehow.
Right.
That's how we do it.
Right.
We've already talked about, you know, how my parents mean at the beginning, set a clear guidelines, you're not going to be parents in the middle, things like that, so. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable, we're going to have to ask more of these folks who coach, but that's just time to rent, and if they're not willing to do it, then can't have that sport.
I can do that, just purely out of curiosity, not for vity, but just talking about those thermometers when they check in. Are they, like, is there like a, are they dead on, or, or if it's like, is there like, are they a degree or so below, would they consider?
We have found them to run low. We have found them to run low.
Yeah, so that's my.
However, everybody says.
Is there a range we should put in the thing that if they show anything over mark, or this amount?
It'll be, it'll be when it gets to.
It'll be?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I got you.
I'm a 96.51, no matter what the normal, normal temp, the normal ID.
Consistent guy?
Cold-hearted man, rest in peace.
I find them there as delegates and alter them through the capital conference.
We talked about, I can, you know, you asked me.
Yeah.
Are you, is there my, Mr. Sharp being the delegate?
It's all about voting, anyway.
Yes.
Pardon, completely correct.
I think we'll have an alternate, was this a song?
I threw that out, there's anybody who volunteered, no one did.
I'd be unexcused.
Yeah.
Like, you said Mr. Song would be the alternate?
No.
Are you sure he didn't say that?
Absolutely, because I were good in the couple, and you loved it, yeah.
You know, I took it to.
I take my time this year.
Dave might want to be the alternate, starting November 7th.
And so I think the delegate is, yeah, it's a Sunday, so it's on a Sunday, and I think that the business meeting is. The delegate is on Tuesday, Monday.
I don't, I don't, I guess I didn't love this game.
What month? I think.
See, it started on a Sunday now, it's just.
It does, but Monday's a big day. And then Tuesday morning is kind of a big, I like maybe, but I think the delegate is like Monday afternoon or like 3 o'clock-ish?
Usually.
Late afternoon, which last time, that's a very interesting, I did the delegate one year and it was very interesting.
So you're saying there's a change more than we need to work on?
Thanks if my job would fill me. I'm in a half-day, every day, 11 days conference, starting the weekend. It gets tedious. Online? Yeah, it's a virtual conference, and it's hours and hours and hours, so I just don't know if I can do that another day.
It does say it's November 7th, 10th.
Yes.
Saturday?
Well, yeah, because they did some things on Saturday night, didn't they? They sent well some.
I was never participating on Saturday night at the capital conference, I assure you.
So I'm sure then that Monday is the delegate, because when you've been up there, you've had a hard time getting back for the board meeting. Yes. Because you have to stay for that delegate thing. Or if you were to delegate. Sometimes you'd actually need the board meeting for athletes. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying. Students have the drive time and fighting traffic. The annual business meeting of the OSBA delegate assembly is held virtually on Thursday, October 29th, at 6:30 PM. That's, yeah, I know, that's very different.
You know, I've seen things, it just hasn't really sunk in yet. But I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's actually this week.
Wow, I'm like, oh.
Which really less, you know, something happens to me, I'm really the only one who needs to go.
Don't let anything happen, it is interesting though. On October 29th at 6:30. So here, it's just Kyle and everyone, they, they would need an alternate.
Everyone else is playing for.
I don't try not to get COVID if we know there's.
That's still a Zoom meeting.
That's true. Quarantining at home, like, an athlete going like.
You sure you're dressed appropriately? All right, no alternate.
I posted a lot of things about something. I think you did after you got with them, I think they, you know, they need to know by a certain date.
Jill, did you say that we're all signed up for the conference though, so we can jump on and, as you allow?
You can view up until December 31st anything that they have, except, I mean, there's some things that are live.
Yeah, I sent it to the, the link to the principal, so I'll send it to you guys also. Yeah, I'll, I'll send it.
I grow the 78 so I can.
Thank you.
Do it. Put it on my calendar. I do want to do.
Mr. Hent and I do have a purchase on our end too, just in case.
All right. Bring my watch to you again?
Looks like the meeting is a gun here. Justin Luke, Brandon Second, into a meeting, are there any discussions? All right, we'll call.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
This is Song?
Yes.
This is Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
At 9:18, thank you. So Scott had asked.
Thank you, Al.